Good evening. At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like to welcome everyone here this evening. Are there, we have an agenda before us, so there ain't changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. I will call on City Clerk Kyle Box to take the role since we are still operating under the pandemic restrictions, at least for a bit yet. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Here.
Craig Schaefer.
Here.
Steve Meister.
Here.
John Edblum.
Here.
John De Kramer.
Here.
Russ La Bat.
Here.
Jim Lozinski.
Here.
The council is all present. The, we do have an introduction to make and I'll, sure. I'll call on City Administrator Sharon Hanson to introduce one of our newest staff at the city. Sharon?
Yes, Mayor and council members, we did fill a vacancy with the retirement of Mary Tate. And that position has been filled by Amy Ackward. And I just want to introduce her to the council. She is the admin assistant for not only community services, but we did add some duties for the administration as well. And that means possibly she'll assist with some scheduling for council members when there's meetings being requested. And then also she's already played a role in some special events upcoming. She's going to help with City Hall Open House and the 150th, we put her on that committee as well and, and just some day-to-day admin, but I will let Amy give a brief background on herself and, and welcome her to, to the City Council and the City of Marshall. So, Amy?
Thanks Sharon. I'm happy to be here and I'm happy I got the job at this city and I look forward to working with everybody. Brief background, I graduated from MSUM and then worked at an ad agency in Fargo, North Dakota for about four years. I have a little bit of background in advertising and public relations. Worked with City of Fargo and City of Morehead, so I'm familiar with how the city is laid out and works. And I look forward to working with everybody.
Welcome. Yeah, welcome Amy. We're thrilled that you've joined the city, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move then to Agenda I have number three. Agenda I have number three is to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on April 27. Council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
Move second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
John Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda I have number four. This is the first of two public hearings that we have this evening. Agenda I have number four is a, a public hearing regarding a home property tax abatement request. The, so we'll have a public hearing. Following the public hearing, we will consider the resolution that would approve the home property tax abatement. Again, the location, 1107 Slate Street. I'll call on City Clerk Kyle Box to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you had stated there, the last council meeting, council called for a public hearing to be held tonight for the property located at 1107 Slate Street. The property has an estimated market value of $245,400. And then you can see the difference of improvement. And then within the fiscal aspect, impact, you can, in the background material is the estimated amount of assistance. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, input as part of the public hearing? Yep, there is no public comment as part of the public hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move.
I'll second.
Motion by Don, seconded by John to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
John Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll now consider the resolution that would approve the home property tax abatement for 1107 Slate Street. Is there, are there any questions about the resolution?
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ. Discussion? Now we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
John Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move to Agenda I have number five. As we move to Agenda I have number five, due to a conflict of interest, I will pass the gavel to President Protam, John De Kramer, and I will abstain from the vote as well as the discussion. John?
Okay, item five, we have a, again, a public hearing regarding a property tax abatement request for the address of 512 Continental Street. And following that, the consideration of the resolution approving the, uh, property tax abatement. So I will turn the public hearing again back over to Kyle Box to handle the public hearing.
Thank you, President Protam. Similar to the last agenda item, information that was called for or public hearing tonight was called at the last public or city council meeting to be held tonight. The difference of improvement and the approximate amount of assistance is located in your background material. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any comments, public or council regarding the public hearing?
Um, I have a question and, and Dennis, I know I called you earlier because I just want to clarify, did you check with the league on this? And I'll be frank with you, I, I just want to make sure we're doing this correct. Because I, as a council member, will probably be bringing a house forward later this summer. I know there's another council member I visited with that's thinking about doing something. I'm not, I'm not gonna name who it is because we're just discussing, and I don't want to have the look of that we're doing this to benefit ourselves financially, because it was made very clear in the statute that we cannot financially benefit from being on city council. So then we have three council members that have asked for this tax abatement. I, I just want to make sure that the smell test passes on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Lozinski. Yes, I have contacted the League of Minnesota Cities and have done some additional research on this matter. Councilmembers, one of the matters you have to take care of is land use issues within the city. You develop special assessment policies, tax abatement policies, zoning issues, all of which, just because you're a property owner in the City of Marshall, does not mean you have a conflict. Those are things that councils are expected to do. That's broad picture issues. Like I said, we spent time recently, special assessment policies. We're addressing conditional use permits, interim use permits. Development of those policies does not create a conflict of interest. However, once the policy is in place and the enforcement or the implementation of a policy affects you personally, that's where you would have to step back and abstain. And that's what's happening here. Big picture, you develop the policy. And then, you know, if there's a road construction project in front of your residence and you're asked to pay a special assessment, you would have to abstain from that issue. Likewise, if you're a property owner and you apply for an abatement, you, as any other taxpayer in the community, can do that. But you must abstain from the decision-making process regarding that particular request. As the, the current one, the mayor has abstained last week or last meeting and calling for tonight's hearing, he's abstained entirely from the discussion and the decision-making process this evening. But it is not a conflict to help establish that policy. And the tax abatement policy was established prior to July 24th of 2018. So we're two and a half years into this already. It is not a conflict to participate, you know, whether it's the mayor, whether it's yourself, Mr. Lozinski or any other member. If it does impact you personally, yes, abstain from that particular issue, but not a conflict to develop the policy years ago. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Dennis. I just want to make sure it's all cleared up so we have, so the public has a good, clear answer. Appreciate your work giving us a good, clear answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis, and thank you, James, for the question. Are there any other comments or questions regarding this public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion to, uh, close the public hearing and the second, no other discussion. Kyle will call for a vote.
Mayor Burns.
Abstain.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
John Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
Okay, and then second part of that, that, that motion does pass. So second part of this is the consideration of the resolution approving the property tax abatement. Looking for a motion to approve resolution.
I move the resolution.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Don. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Kyle asks for a vote.
Mayor Burns.
Abstain.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
John Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Are you gonna give the meeting back to me now?
I'll give you the gavel back.
Okay. Thank you, John. The, we'll move then with Agenda I have number six. This is, uh, consider the award of bids for 23, Highway 23, Independence Park Sewer Realignment Project. We have a resolution that would accept the bid and award the contract. I'll call on City Engineer Director of Public Works, Jason Anderson, to present.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, largely a sanitary sewer project that started as a, a realignment of the sewer that you can see on the map there. That's, that's the, the current alignment or the, the new proposed alignment of the sanitary sewer that runs through Runnings Property. Today, it crosses under Highway 23 to the north and then west across Independence Park and actually between the storm sewer pipes that link the, the small pond to the larger Independence Park pond. Uh, we're realigning that sewer and in, in doing so, getting rid of some, some poor pipe locations that we have under the highway and also through the pond area. It also puts us in a really good spot when we look at, um, doing park improvements with the trail and different things by abandoning some sewer in there. In doing the sewer repairs, we're also upgrading the, uh, pipe outlet to the Runnings Pond. That's north of Runnings and west, uh, west of Midwest Bank. So we're doing some piping improvements there on the outlet and inlet, uh, to go along with the sewer work. On May 5th, bids were received for the project. Now, we did receive four bids with the, um, low bid coming in from D and G Excavating and Marshall in the amount of $189,448.50. Slightly over engineer's estimate of 188,520. If you include our allowance and contingency, uh, as well as engineering and administrative costs, we're at, uh, $230,748.27. Now, this project was included in our CIP and staff did review the bids and we would recommend to award.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Um, questions for, for Jason?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Craig.
Jason, do we have any responsibility on the pipe we're abandoning as far as integrity, uh, under 23s or anything we need to do to that? Uh, in the MenDOT right-of-way?
We're not planning to at this point in time. We will follow up outside, outside of this project with our own forces to do some, what we call bulkheadings on some different ends where we'll dig down or probably go into some manholes and we will, uh, plug up the pipe ends and sort of seal it up. But we're, we're not planning to remove the pipe or fill the pipe in its entirety.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation. I would entertain a motion on this, uh, resolution that will accept the bid and award the contract.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid and award the contact, or contract.
Motion by John, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Don. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The one question I have and probably for Jason to answer is why was the engineer's estimate lower than the bids? Do we have any idea why? Is there a change in some material, which is what I'm assuming, but?
Um, you know, we've been on a roll lately where we've been coming in lower than our estimates. We try to make sure our estimates are fairly tight. Uh, we don't want to have too much fluff in there, but, you know, we were a little worried with these bids that there would be some higher, significantly higher cost materials with some of the, uh, backlogs in the supply chain. That, that is affecting a lot of different things. The concrete products are more expensive right now, or they could be. We were worried they could be. There's certainly a, a time period that you have to wait. Same with a lot of the plastic products, but in reviewing the bids, uh, we didn't think that anything was too far out of line and we felt like the, the bids were, were quite close to our estimate. We're, we're satisfied.
You were close, so, thank you, Jason.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
John Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen for the consent agenda. And they include, consider the request of Marshall Downtown Business Association for Crazy Days, which will be Thursday, July 15, 2021. For the sounds of summer, we will call for a public hearing for the private use of the public streets and parking lots for the sounds of summer dates, which will be August 19th to 23rd from the wastewater treatment facilities. We have a payment application to Magni Construction as well as the payment invoice to Bolton and Mink. Uh, also on the consent agenda is setting a public hearing for the MS4 Program Summary for the 2020 Activities. Consider the approval of Alvin Out of State Travel Request. Consider the approval of Declaration of the Official Intent for the Reimbursement of the Expenditures with the Proceeds of Taxes and Bonds. Consider the approval of the Resolution Authorizing the Transfer of Funds from Fund 101 to General Fund to the Capital Project Fund. Consider the approval of the temporary 3.2% malt liquor license for Marshall Baseball Association. Consider the approval of the temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Knights of Columbus for May 21st, 2021. Consider the approval of temporary on-sale liquor license for the SMSU Foundation. Consider the premises permit application for Marshall Area Amateur Hockey Association, and then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Number 13, please.
I, I'm sorry, Russ, which, which number?
Number 13.
Okay, any other item? If not, is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, Kyle will move to a vote.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
John Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda I have number 13, which is the approval of the resolution transferring the funds from Fund 101, the General Fund to the Capital Project Fund. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the resolution, it, uh, it clearly states that the, whereas the agreement is not to exceed 193,200, but yet therefore it would not be resolved that we're going to transfer $250,000. Wondering why the difference of $50,000?
And I'll call in Annette Storm, who's, uh, uh, our Administrative Services Director. Annette?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, great question, Councilmember. Um, I did increase the amount of transfer, um, at the request of the City Administrator Hanson. It was expressed that there might be additional expenses coming up with some kind of type of survey or, um, other kind of work to be done. Um, and I can let her speak maybe a little bit more to that.
Sure.
One of the factors, um, going forward on the Aquatic Center is financing and what method are we going to use? We did have a presentation from Terry Heaton probably a couple of months ago to the council on different financing options. And I did ask for feedback from council. I haven't heard a lot, so, but, um, that's okay because staff have still been discussing this. One, uh, thought is, um, giving the public an opportunity to weigh in on that financing. That might be through a general obligation bond or maybe through another type of bond. And how do we build support for that? Uh, we cannot fail on the Aquatic Center in terms of moving forward on it. Um, even though when you ask the question, if we do that, if we do a referendum, it'll be a yes or a no. So, uh, how do we build that support? And, um, the 50,000, it really is just kind of pulled out of the air. Maybe you don't need 50,000, maybe you need 25,000, maybe you need 15,000. I'm not entirely sure. But, uh, we may want to assess, um, what is the best path? I've checked into a couple of firms about doing a, a community survey assessment. Um, this would be a scientific survey, not a doodle or a Survey Monkey, which are subject to a lot of error. Uh, and the survey alone to get a scientific result would be approximately 20,000. So I had that in my head, um, and then who knows what else may come up. And I don't know, Annette, what the timing of this is. I suppose you can always come back to council and have another transfer and do another resolution. But to kind of avoid that, um, this just kind of sets it in place. And, um, you know, the design process for the architect is six to eight months. So I, I, and under this contract, I could see, um, the additional amount kind of covering us for a longer time period than just the near future. So I know I gave you a really, uh, detailed answer, but, um, that was a thought process of including additional revenue. We would not spend it if we did not need it. So.
Okay, thank you, Annette. Thank you, Sharon, for that explanation. Any other question?
Mr. Mayor, just a response to that. But again, this agreement is with Stockwell Engineers for Phase 1 Design. That agreement specifically says $193,200. That's all we're talking about is this, is that agreement. We're not talking about additional things that we might incur, whatever the case should be. So I feel that we should only be transferring $193,200 because we're talking about the agreement with a specific company. We're not talking about anything else. That's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Russ.
I, I do have a question for Annette. If there are, I don't know what it would be, coffee and cookie expenditures for a public meeting to get input, which Stockwell has in their agreement, do we not code it to this Capital Project Fund? Typically, any expense that's related to that project would be charged out of the Capital Project Fund. So it, it really should include more than just that agreement. And I know that resolution states just the agreement. But, um, there are other things that could happen, but maybe Annette would, uh, have a different opinion on that.
That is correct. Anytime we do anything specific to this project, all those expenses would then get quoted to that Capital Project Fund. Um, so the 250,000 would just sit in that fund. So if there were other, kind of agreements or, um, expenses that the council would approve for the pool, this would just secure future funding, is all it is. It's just starting kind of a, kind of a, a fund. We kind of did this, the same thing with the City Hall Construction Fund. We transferred 750,000 from one of the, the debt service funds to start the, you know, the first couple of phases of the architect and that kind of, when the project took off, uh, we were able to finance other, um, components to that project with that, that initial transfer. So this is just kind of starting, kind of like that little nest egg, um, for, for the entire project.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Dennis.
Part of the service contract with the professionals, there are obligations that the City of Marshall has to fulfill on their side of the agreement. We might have to hire a surveyor. We might have to hire locators of utilities. Um, there, there are some expenses that the city will incur part and parcel to this agreement. I did have a meeting late this afternoon with the architect and with Community Services Director Vandermel and with the representative from City Engineers Office. So there, there will be some incidental expenses the city will incur just for fulfilling Phase 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Craig?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And, and I know that, uh, earlier in this process, when we, about the same time that we went out originally and viewed the, the current Aquatic Center, there was conversations and I think, um, one of the things, a point that Councilman La Bat made is that there was concerns to make sure that we survey the community and find out what the needs are. And, you know, maybe there's an idea out there to even go bigger. And I think the, remember, right, the representation that was made is maybe we even need to look at a year-round. Maybe this is a $20 million project. And the only way we're going to know that is that we have to be able to gather that information and be prepared to, to do a, a full view of the project. And I think we need to set ourselves up so that we're in a position that if we need to do that work, we can.
But the other clarification is, uh, you know, as, uh, Annette had mentioned, any future expenditure, any contract would be approved by the council. It would just be paid out of the fund that Annette would be setting up. Okay, other input?
Mr. Mayor? What, what are these?
Go ahead.
Kyle, can you go back one, one screen, please? So maybe what we need to do is say, whereas City Council approved an agreement pending legal review with Stockwell Engineers for Phase 1 Design Architecture and Engineering Services for the Marshall Aquatic Center, and whereas the agreement is not to exceed 193,200 and additionally, whereas there is very likely to be additional incidental expenditures related to Phase 1 that, um, however we say it, and it isn't expected to occur, then we could say, now be it resolved that the transfer 250,000.
I think that's a very good suggestion.
Excellent suggestion.
I, I was just going to suggest that, Steve, but you beat me to it. I have to look smarter than you, Councilman Lozinski. I don't have to wear masks, though.
Okay, good discussion. Any other, uh, input? If not, uh, with the wording that, uh, Councilmember Meister, uh, included, perhaps you wanted to make a, a motion?
I would, with the additional wording that I put in, I would make the motion that we approve Resolution Number 21039.
I would second that.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
John Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
No.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda I have number 19. This would be considered the adoption of the ordinance amendments related to placement of shipping containers within the city and other mi- minor miscellaneous ordinance revisions. So there's, um, this is back before us. Uh, Ilya, I would turn it to you.
I thank you, Mayor Council. So this, uh, uh, item was in front of the council twice, one for introduction and one, one last time for the public hearing. And, uh, there were some comments from the council members that, uh, requested some amendments to, uh, the way the ordinance was written. So, uh, uh, I did those, uh, changes and, uh, I just, uh, told that it would be, uh, appropriate to go through the council one more time to make sure that I caught everything that was said and, uh, the council agreed with everything.
So that, that's your request, Ilya, is?
Correct. Just, uh, uh, one more time through the council, so into, uh, your vote for approval.
So, uh, so the question for the council is, uh, based on the actual language that has been put into the ordinance, is that consistent with the direction and the, uh, that led to the motion to approve the ordinance?
I have a quick question. On the bottom of your recommendations, you still have it listed as a-
I have a quick question. On the bottom of your recommendations, you still have it listed as a conditional use permit. Were we not going to change that to a, I can't think of the word.
Yes. No, I apologize for that thing. If you read the ordinance, the ordinance does say interim use.
Oh, yeah. I was just getting to the recommendation. So, okay, so it has been changed to.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
So sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, just a question too for Ilya on letter, number, letter F. I think Councilman Schaefer made a recommendation that the word shall be changed to may. I don't see that in our or was it vice versa? I don't remember.
I think that change has been made. The word may shows up in the screening in subparagraph two. Two has the word may, which is where.
It may be screened.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Labatt, for, for making sure also. Thank you for asking that.
Okay. Any other clarification? If not, Ilya, are you good with this or do you want some official motion?
I don't know. I think maybe.
We need to make a, we need to adopt it, don't we? No, you adopted it last time.
Correct. Maybe City Attorney should give us.
This is just cleaned up.
This could be considered just an informational.
Sure.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So this is informational. You okay with that, Ilya?
Yes, that's okay.
Very good.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 20, consider the joint funding agreement with USGS for the Redwood River Gauging Station near Marshall. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. In the council packet, you've got a copy of a joint funding agreement with the US Geological Survey for the Redwood River Gauging Station west of town here, located on the pedestrian bridge in Wayside Park. We typically do five-year agreements with them, but I forget the specific reason, but for whatever reason, they want to do a one-year agreement now and do a five-year agreement after this year. I think they were having some internal changes and it was just easier to tidy this up with a one-year agreement for now. But as you may remember, since 2010, we've been responsible for half of the costs of operating that gauging station with the USGS paying the other half. That amount for this upcoming year is $8,610. Since 2010, we have been sharing those costs with ADM as a, as our partner and ensuring that that gauge is operational. Years ago, we did reach out to numerous other entities for additional cost sharing. But ADM was the, was the company that really stood out and stepped up and chose to participate with us. So we would propose that we enter into this agreement. I think we all know how important that gauge is to the city. I could answer any questions if there are some.
I think it's a, that gauge is highly important for the city, for our overall stormwater flood control management and it's highly accessible. It's accessible through our webpage. It's also important to the industry and it's important for the region. So the, you know, I'm highly supportive of continuing it. And, you know, it's very good that ADM is also participating in it because as they, they're also interested in what the flow levels are, are in the river. It does have a regional significance also. So, but of course, it's just Marshall and ADM that are cost sharing it. I go by there frequently during the season and it's very frequent when USGS is actually out there, you know, doing maintenance and, you know, being sure that the calibration is correct. So they, they really do good service for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of other background pieces too. And ADM has been a great partner in this and and ADM has, and the Marshall both have another interest in this because there are permit requirements in both of our NPDS permits for wastewater discharge and the limits that are tied to those based on that stream flow. And so the flows from that gauge actually calibrate or determine what some of those limits are if they're changing. The other side of that, the benefit downstream, and it's really unfortunate that we don't have more partners sharing in that because there's a lot of, of private ag industry assets that utilize the floodplain. And there's significance in having the predictability of when there's potentially a problem in that forewarning, especially with livestock producers that pasture and there's gravel operations and a lot of equipment that sit down in that floodplain that if you talk to some of the other potential partners, they'll tell you that they only care about the one at Russell and that one's a pretty narrow channel, is a good predictor for us to anticipate what's happening. But when you look at the, the, the stage of the river, when it's at this gauging, this particular station is when it actually flattens out into the floodplain and is a better predictor. So it's really, I want to just thank Jason and encourage him to continue to leverage those other partners because there is a lot of identifiable downstream benefactors too. But I think this is something crucial for us to continue to support and, and I agree, the USGS does an amazing job of keeping that calibrated and functioning and it saved us way more than this in just the last couple of years for us to, to respond and prepare for things. So I too support this.
John? Just a question for Jason. There's no really significant changes in this from the previous agreement, is there? Just really the timeframe?
Right. Just the timeframe and we'll come back in another year with a longer term agreement.
Mr. Mayor, just for the public's knowledge and my own knowledge, when did this first go in and when was that initial agreement made?
So Jason, do you want to take that?
No, I think, I think I got to pump that to you, Mayor.
So the gauge has been in place for a long period of time and then shortly, I want to say in the mid 1990s, the or perhaps it was even later than that, when there were some budget shortfalls at the, at the state level. DNR, which was funding their, their part of it with USGS pulled back their funding for budgetary reasons. For this gauge, they kept the, the Russell gauge. So the USGS was interested in keeping this one because there's a long history of it being there. And they have data going back generations almost. So the, that's when it first came to the city to really pick up the, the state portion that had been paid by DNR. So, and that's when the, the reach out to the other entities and specifically Lyon County Emergency Management, Area Two Water Basin and RCRCA, Redwood Cotton Lake River Control Association, went out and the only, only participant at that time was ADM. I think it might be worth another just informative contact with Area Two RCRCA and Lyon County Emergency Management.
That's what I was going to say. And even some of the agricultural partners that are along that floodplain, we've obviously shown the data and the data, if you can show that that gauge is beneficial in saving livestock and saving money when those, and giving people time, that shows a value and, you know, you get more partners and the cost, you know, people aren't paying now, pay a little bit. But overall, the cost goes down and for everybody. And if you had the benefit, you might as well. And the worst you can say is, when people say no, but they're certainly not going to say yes if they're never asked.
Right. Okay. Any other input? If not, is there a motion?
I would move to accept with Jason or staff as indicated or deemed by whoever's in charge of it, reaching out to the partners to just ask them if they want to participate again. Leverage it.
We can, we can do that, Councilman. We've, we reached out to Lyon County this time around. Did, we did get a no answer again, but we can certainly try some of the other partners as well.
Motion by Steve is there? Seconded by Craig. Now discussion.
Sorry about that, Mayor.
That's okay.
I think, you know, when we do this and we reach out to Lyon County and some of the other public entities that we ask to fund and they give us a no, I think we just need to tuck that in our pockets. So when they come and knock it on Marshall's door, we say, no. You know, it's, you've got to think about it. It becomes a, you scratch my back, I'll scratch your back, especially when it's for the good of floodplain management and something that affects us all.
Other discussion and a motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russell Bapp?
Yes.
Kim Mazinski?
Yes.
And a motion passes. Agenda Item Number One, consider the sublease of the FBO agreement at the airport. Once again, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Our Airport Fixed Base Operator Midwest Aviation has moved the aerial spraying portion of their business from Midwest Aviation into an entity named Midwest Aerial Ag LLC. The Department, Minnesota Department of Aeronautics requires a letter from the airport owner to grant permission to this new business entity to operate at our airport in order to get their operator certificate. In reviewing our lease agreement with the FBO and in coordination with our city attorney, we determined that a sublease agreement would be required and our attorney's office has, has drafted that and that's attached with the packet. We did bring this to Airport Commission on May 5th and they did unanimously recommend approval. Staff also supports this sublease as well. And I would entertain any questions we might have.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Any questions? If not.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russell Bapp?
Yes.
Kim Mazinski?
Yes.
And a motion passes. Agenda Item Number 22, consider the resolution awarding the sale of the Obligation Bond Series 2021A. And we'll also discuss Agenda Item Number 23 at the same time. This is consider the resolution awarding the sale of General Obligation Bond Series 2021B. I'll call first on Annette Storm, Director of Administrative Services, and she will then introduce Terry Heaton from Baker Tilly. Annette?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are doing the final approval for our bond issuance for 2021. And as the mayor has, had stated, it is in two separate issuances. And I'm happy to introduce Terry Heaton and she can go over the results of the bond sales.
Thank you, Annette. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, nice to see you again via Zoom. The, the results is tonight for the two bond sales are what I'll be going over. The first bond sale is $1,965,000 of bonding that was offered for several improvements. As the city does, they're, they put together several types of bond into one issue to save on issuance costs. So there are components of this for park improvements. The abatement portion, there's a fire station improvement, there are various equipment pieces, and then also street reconstruction projects all lumped into this bond. And today, we, we took bids on this. This is an eight-year term. And we received seven bids as listed on the overhead and the low bid came from UMB Bank. The interest rate is 0.7991%. And our estimate, I thought was quite low a month ago, which is at 1.14%. So I keep being surprised by the market and so that's about 35 basis points less than our estimate. You had a lot of market interest. There were seven bids and that came from 34 financial institutions as there were syndicate bid on, from some of the bids, meaning multiple underwriters coming together. And the bonds sold very well. They were a rated double A. The city maintained its credit rating and maybe at the end of both of these, or whenever you'd like, I can talk a little bit more about the credit rating as it applies to both issues. Would you like me to also talk about the second issue or do you want to have separate actions?
No, you might just go ahead and talk about the second issue.
Okay. The second bond issue offered was for state aid street funds. And this amount was $2,310,000. And on this, we also received eight bids representing 35 financial institutions. The low bid came from Raymond James and Associates. And it, with an interest rate, this is also for eight years, 0.7259%. And a month ago, our estimate was 1.105%. So 33 basis points are about a third of a percent less than our estimate. The, you know, obviously, these are really fabulous results. And just to talk a little bit about the credit rating that went along with this, there was a lot of, a lot of questions from the credit readings. Agents, as you can imagine, after the pandemic and during, and they want to know about what's going on with all the businesses. So Sharon and Annette did a fabulous job of answering a lot of questions that we walked through on the economy, on your budgeting and, and your reserves and what's going on with all the businesses in the community. They had a lot of questions and a lot of interest and they just represented the city very well. So so they have not only a double A, but also stable outlook in this time of a pandemic. And just to, to note that the different categories that they have, and again, it starts at the top with the leadership and throughout the whole city, all of the staff. They're, you know, they are looking at the economy and you do have a student population and so that isn't as strong as, you know, in the higher category, but still the economy is, is what they're looking at and the effective buying power. The things that you can really control, your strong management, good financial policies, very complimentary of the staff and the results that they were seeing, strong budgetary performance with operating results that they, they felt were very strong, strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity. And those were all comments that they had. And as we've talked about in the past, they, they talk about weak debt, but as I said, in Minnesota, that's just a matter of how they see it. We have very high cash balances and we have debt that's higher when you look across the country. But we also have roads that are in better shape and infrastructure that's stronger, which is also a plus in their book. The main thing about the debt is that they note that you've got 81.8% of your debt that's being retired in 10 years. So when they look at debt, they're more concerned about when you have a 30 or 40-year bond issue and you're, you're deferring your costs. And again, Marshall's very strong in this area and that you have an eight-year repayment on all of the bonds that are being issued tonight. So you're definitely not deferring costs. So I think a big congratulations is in order on that kind of a report during this time. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on the sale, the credit rating or anything else.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. We'll open up for any questions the council may have. If not, we'll take action on these one at a time. First, the Series 2021A General Obligation Bond. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we do the resolution awarding the sale of General Obligation Bond Series 2021A.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russell Bapp?
No.
Kim Mazinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll also then move then to the 2021B General Obligation Bonds.
I will move the resolution to approve awarding of the general sales obligation bond series 2021B.
Second. Motion by John, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, no discussion. We'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
No.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russell Bapp?
No.
Kim Mazinski?
Yes.
And a motion does pass. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Annette.
Thank you.
That you have either of you.
Just congratulations. You timed it well again.
Thanks, Terry.
We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 24, consider the amendment to the agreement to the deferred special assessment, the pay of water assessment of $8,469.77 and the continued deferral of the sanitary sewer assessment in the amount of $8,821.19. And this all relates to the project that was, or properties that were outside the limits and then came into the city limits. And this all relates to the project that was uh, or properties that were outside the limits and then came into the city limits and at that time, they did not need city services and now there is a partial change to the. Jason?
Uh, Mayor, I will actually uh, let Dennis present this one. I believe this is his memo.
Okay, Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The engineering department received a request from the property owner to go through the process of now accessing the city water system, their well. They, they believe it's cheaper to hook up than it is to put in the new well. This agreement, the amendment to the prior deferral agreement has been sent to the property owners. Um, I've received email back from them saying, yes, they will sign it. They will get it into the city and then that will start the process to eliminate the deferral on the water special assessment. And they're thinking with the 6.1% interest on the payments, they may want to come up and pay it all off and full instead of carry that. But that's up to the property owners and they are agreeable with the agreement that's been set.
And that also is consistent when they're, when that property was annexed into the city. So at such time that they needed the city service, city services would be available.
Right. And this is, yeah, that, there's no change in the principal amount and interest would start upon the, the approval of this agreement.
Any questions for Dennis?
I might just have a quick question. So these folks reannexed, and as their systems fail, they have the choice to go back to either say a well or a septic and not be forced to hook up to city services?
Wow. I, I don't think so, Councilmember Lozinski. I think once their systems fail, they, they have to make the financial decision to hook up to the system. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Good clarification, Jim. Yes, thank you.
Other, uh, any other questions?
Dennis, just a question. If they choose not to pay all of it, um, you said the 6.1% interest will be continued at that rate?
Yeah, yes, it will for the 10-year period of time or until they decide to pay it. But yes, it is for the 10-year period of time.
Thank you.
John?
And then just the last question regarding the, uh, assuming septic system that they have now. Is there any, you know, review of that to, to make sure that that's operating consistent? I'm not familiar enough with if the county does something in that order or not, so.
I'm not either. That, that might be an engineering question.
I've spoken with, I've spoken with John Behren at the county about that briefly and I believe what he said was at the time of sale, they are inspected. So at that point in time, if they ever sell the property, I think it initiates a mandatory inspection. Um, I'm actually unaware of any ordinance where we require you to connect to our sewer. You know, some communities do have a similar ordinance where if you're within 200 feet of the sewer system, you must connect or something like that. I'm unaware of that, but I think that they would have a tough time getting an approved septic system in the event that they had to repair it. So de facto, they're going to connect. Um, that, that and it's cheaper to connect our system than to put a new mound system.
Cheaper to connect. And our, our uh, resident septic expert.
Well, and Jay.
Having better.
Boy, that could be taken a lot of ways.
Prior life. Um, actually, the uh, state statute says that if central sewer is available, it has to be done unless not feasible. And typically during annexation, it works exactly the way this did. So it's, this move is totally appropriate.
Well, and, and just for reference, the septic system now is running close to 30,000. So it, it's not cost effective to do a septic.
Okay, uh, any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Agenda item number 25, to the resolution authorizing the execution of a MINDOT detour agreement for the Truck Highway 59 um, resurfacing project. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, MINDOT will be performing a concrete maintenance project this summer on US 59 through Marshall. Uh, I believe I've talked with council about this at, at past meetings. The work will begin at Highway 23 and progress south down to County Road 6. As part of that project, uh, specifically when they're doing the work on the two-lane portion of 59, there will be a detour in place that will send traffic down County Road 6 and up County Road 35, which eventually turns into Saratoga Street in the city marshal city limits. As part of that, um, MINDOT has a detour agreement where they, um, they propose to pay for consumed road life and detour maintenance costs. And in our case, their formula estimates $983.93. Um, MINDOT does have a standard formula for this developed in the nineties, used on, in all of these situations. So it's pretty, a pretty stock calculation for them, but staff has no issues with it. Uh, we're aware of this detour and uh, we would move or propose that council, uh, accept the agreement.
Jason, for the viewers, uh, that may, may be watching this, um, you want to review the, the time of when the detour will be in place?
Sure, yeah. Um, I believe the, they are anticipating mid to late August for the work to occur around Marshall. And I believe it's kind of a three to five week window. There'll be some concrete panel replacements, um, wherever they deem it necessary. And then they'll do a, a diamond grinding of the surface to reinstate smoothness and friction in the surface. So um, August time period. And when they're working in the city limits in our four-lane portion of 59 there, traffic will be allowed to go through in one lane or the other. So there will be passable traffic in Marshall, but when they're working out in the two-lane portion, that won't be possible.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions?
I do, Jason. I, I was looking at this detour. Is there any way we can encourage the state to push it up one more County Road south because of the residential neighborhood? You know, you said late August and we're talking school, school buses, and that's a residential area. There's a lot of people there. If we push, if we can encourage the state to push it up to the airport road, that county road, it's a little more out of the way, but less intrusive to the traffic and the residents in that neighborhood.
The only problem is that that's a gravel road. I mean, 35 and 7.
Oh, it is. You're correct. You're correct. I was thinking it was paved, but it's not. You are correct. Thank you.
Steve?
The only thing that I have concerns about there is the added traffic like Councilmember Lozinski said about school issues and there's the um, cars, car addition out there and the J-turn there. And so if people are coming south, they're going to have to go down 23 and get them that J-turn and come back. And I just wonder how much, I mean, this will give the J-turn a true testament safety.
Yep.
So.
One of the things if we could, if we could actually encourage um, them to do some signage where the truck traffic would be coming into like Marshall on 19 and want to go 59 south to encourage them to turn at either County Road 11 or County Road 9 and get on 6 and come across that way to keep them actually from coming into Marshall and having to do that J-turn.
I can certainly bring it up or suggest it. Um, but a, at some point, I I think that this is their preferred detour for sure. I mean, I, I think that they have confidence that the J-turn intersection will be just fine and and it's the shortest route to impact traffic, but I can certainly discuss with them if there's opportunity to move some trucks around town.
And there, there may be some additional even um, I know MINDOT has the video billboard, portable video billboards near where the pedestrian crossing is in the area of um, of well, just past, just past Genesis to where it crosses over to the pedestrian overpass, so.
That's a good point as well, Mayor, and maybe we could use our portable speed sign in that neighborhood as well during that detour period because the road is wide and we do, it is hard to get slowed down when you're coming through there. So we may want to remind folks that way as well.
There's a, also on, on 35 there on Saratoga Street, that is a very active in the summertime bicycle route.
Yes, yes.
And so this will be uh, we need to make sure that the safety is there.
John?
I, I think and, and I don't have children in the school district anymore, but I think Marshall is now back to starting school after Labor Day. So we should be. So that would help alleviate a lot of the concern you're having.
That's a good point.
Some of that anyway.
Yep. Okay. Okay, with that is um, there a motion to approve the MINDOT grant agreement for the, for this detour or not the grant agreement, the.
I have one more quick question for Jason on this. Jason, wh- when they detour this, do they dictate the speed or can we dictate the speed along that residential, maybe slow those trucks down? Cause speaking from experience, a lot of people probably significantly past the speed limit before it actually increases to 55 miles an hour.
Right. That's where I was suggesting, maybe we step up our enforcement and we can work with Jim Marshall, our police chief on that and setting up our portable speed sign so folks get reminded and then maybe we have a higher presence during that period of time too, to kind of maintain that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? If not, is there a motion for the uh, MINDOT detour agreement execution?
I move approval of the resolution.
I'll second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just got a bad gut feel about this, so I'll, I'll be voting no, but it's just a gut feel. I have no scientific data. It's just a gut. Um, Steve, last time it was detoured here, there wasn't accident along there. That, that's why I'm very concerned about these detour too. Um, I believe this is the intersection that we had a fairly severe accident last time this was used as a detour.
And that was like, like Dr. Meister said, that was prior to the J-turn scenario. And I'm guessing that once a truck rolls through there, if they're a regular route on there, they will find a different route if those J-turns are problematic. Usually you only do that one cycle and you find a different path.
Other discussion? If there's no other discussion, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
No.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
No.
Jim Lozinski.
No.
And uh, Kyle, the vote was 4-3?
Correct.
And the motion does pass. Agenda item, uh, well, before we leave that, Jason, you'll be in contact with MINDOT. You can, the concerns that were expressed are, are true concerns and, and you can communicate those concerns.
Right. I, I certainly will do that. I'll um, ensure that they're aware of the trepidation on our council and um, we and they will have to work hard to make sure that um, it, it works smoothly here, so.
Okay, thank you. We'll move then to the uh, uh, consider the resolution uh, authorizing the execution of the MINDOT grant agreement uh, for the federal airport expenses and the reimbursement under the C R R S A A or S A A. Jason?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is another item where we're being paid money, but a little bit more. Um, City Marshals received an airport coronavirus response grant program grant under the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. It's a lot of words. Um, the, the amount of the grant is $23,000 and the purpose of the grant is to reimburse uh, eligible airport expenses at our airport and it's administered by the FAA. Uh, in order for us to receive this um, grant, we do need to enter into an agency agreement with MINDOT uh, Arrow. So these funds, it seems from, from my initial research that these funds can be used on a lot of different things, including payroll. Uh, we'll work closely with uh, Carla and our finance office to make sure that we're applying for um, with uh, eligible funds, I guess, or eligible expenses. So staff sees no issue with this and we would recommend entering into the agreement.
Any questions?
I move the resolution.
Before you do that, Steve has a.
Mr. Mayor, the, the only question I have is, is this grant, you know, it sounds good and it's not a huge amount of money. It's $23,000. But, you know, the devil's in the details. Are there any hooks in there? Because I know that the public always have, whenever we deal with airports and money there, they always um, still bring up the old bridge to nowhere. So is there any, any hooks in there or anything that brings us some discernment that we need to consider?
We were originally thinking that this grant might be pretty closely tied to, you know, pathogens, stopping pathogens or maybe janitorial services, cleaning type of services. But um, when we read the FAA guidance, it looks like it's a little more open for things like our staffing and payroll. So we'll make sure that, yeah.
You said we have to enter an agreement with MINDOT and that's, what does that entail?
So because of the way the relationship between MINDOT Aeronautics and the FAA is, the MINDOT Aeronautics acts as the channeling agent for all funds that come from the FAA. So that's why we have to enter into this agreement with MINDOT to allow them to give us the money. Thank you.
John?
Uh, and this may more, be more of a question to Annette, but do we know, is there any auditing of these funds or the expenses on this similar to, like say, the chap grants or any of those?
Great question. Um, with the amount of federal funds received here, this is just included with our regular audit. Um, so unless it's just kind of like one of their random um, chosen one, it, it's not considered a single audit at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move the resolution authorizing the execution of the grant agreement.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda item number 27, approve the service agreement for the concessionaire um, at the amateur sports complex. Apologies to the um, um, concessionaire for having this as agenda item number 27, but I'll turn it to Preston Stendrude for our, um, our park superintendent to present.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, tonight, we have a for you an agreement to enter um, into concessionaire services throughout at the new ball fields um, with hitching posts and Jordan is present if there's questions for him. Very similar agreement um, to the Maha agreement at the Red Baron. Um, we have ran concessions there starting in 2018 and 19. Um, 2020, we did not due to COVID and it's becoming increasingly difficult to find staff. Um, as a matter of fact, this year, we started up um, opening applications in February and we got zero. Um, and we posted on social media, we shared it, we did everything and we didn't get a single one. And it was probably March that Jordan um, had reached out and just kind of expressed some interest and we just kind of, kind of picked up some steam and just we kind of thought it'd be something worth trying, especially when we don't have anyone staffing to run it anyways. Um, and he knows a lot more about um, food and uh, selling probably food and prepping food than we do as well. Um, so it'd be proposed to, you know, let him use our equipment. Um, he provides staffing and supplies. And um, he can, he, he's gonna be open for each and every event we have out there. It, I think it just, it would be a good trial just to see how it works. And that's why we're proposing just kind of a rest of this season, you know, through December 31st, even though the season really ends probably in August or something like that. Um, and then we can see, reevaluate how it goes, see what he thinks, see what we think and uh, go from there, so.
Preston, do you want to make just any general comments? I don't expect you to have the specific information on all of the details, but the level of activity that we have planned for this year at the ball complexes in terms of, you know, the regular league as well as tournaments?
Yep, yep. Um, I don't know all the events, like I said, off the top of my head, but uh, some, some of the adult league stuff is kind of, numbers are going down a little bit, but some of the MABA league is picking up some of those nights and more youth stuff. Um, we, we are hosting section tournaments for softball for class 3A or maybe 3 double A. I can't remember um, the exact size uh, for first week in June. There's like three dates. Um, I know we have a state tournament um, in July that I think brings 24, 32 teams. Um, and without um, providing concessions, um, we would lose those events entirely. If you don't have concessions, it's automatically you're eliminated from contention. So I don't think we want to do that. Um, but yeah, it gets used quite often. We um, there, there's other people have expressed interest in trying tournaments and stuff too, not necessarily run by us. Um, so new stuff comes up often and um, this might be a way to draw some other stuff as well.
Well, and that was, the point I was leading to is that uh, the addition of, in this case, a very high quality uh, food vendor uh, will only enhance the attractiveness of, of. Uh, will only enhance the attractiveness of, of participants in this facility and events and activities. So I think it's agreeable.
Yep, I agree, I agree with that.
Other, uh, any other questions for Preston?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Preston, and because of the, the, the way that the equipment there was set up to be. High quality, professional but portable, this has the potential of, of also opening the door for other. Functions at Independence Park, et cetera, that we can possibly, if this works out, maybe let this grow also.
Correct. We've kind of had those initial discussions and figured we'd kind of do it case by case.
Sure.
Basis, whether it's, uh, the Fourth of July or National Night Out, um, Ralph goes going to be having a. Huge event out there in June. They've expressed interest in kind of working with. Jordan, but we just kind of, you know, let's get this going first before we get to our head. Um, but yes, there's, there's definitely a lot of potential. And, um, like I said, I think it's a good fit and it's a good time to try it.
I like the idea that it's one year, a task year.
Steve, and just to ask the obvious, and I'm sure that you guys have worked itself, but. I'm sure that there's in the cost of this, there's a little take for the city and Jordan gets a take.
Um, for this year, we're proposing that there wouldn't be a, a fee. Um, we would be, he uses our equipment, he cleans. Um, we already pay utilities out there with the lights and water and, um, garbage and stuff like that anyways. So it, it may be, he brings his staff, his supplies, cleans up and. You know, we, we kind of don't have a lot of skin in the game, other than it's still our facility and our equipment at the end of the day.
But we also don't have any payroll expense.
Correct, or buying products and maybe it's left at the end of the year, stuff like that.
Sure. The other, the other piece of that too, and I, that's a, that's a great conversation is I could envision this. Similarly to what we have with Maha right now at Red Baron is that. Be, if this is successful, I think that can help answer some of that maintenance upkeep and replacement of the things. I think it just helps to have a. A fixed and quality kind of a base program that this isn't their A game, this is their B game. Um, and I think that that would do well for us to, to kind of grow this. So I'm really encouraged by the one year and let's just see how this goes, kind of crawl, walk, run.
Yep.
Preston, um, and I know you and I had chatted about this earlier, but you've stated the last couple of years that the city actually loses money running concessions out there. Do you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
Um, I don't know exact numbers, but, um, I, I think we've just had, you know, it, we're not. Food experts, um, and to, to let somebody that knows more so what they're doing, I think just. Fits better. Um, and like I said, staffing, when we can't even find any staff to work, um, and then trying to know or think what people. Um. Are gonna want to try and sell, um, where Jordan, I think will bring a little different, um, quality of. Menu and some, some uniqueness to a concession stand, they'll call it. Um, so I think there's a little bit of a selling, different selling factor there, so.
Although, you know, in twenty nineteen, Scott Van der Melon's hot dish was okay.
And the hot dogs were delicious if you're hungry. But just for the record, Councilman Edblum and I would both like to say that we are experts on one end of the food chain, maybe not the run end.
Well, I think it's a great idea and, you know, when, when you have Jordan bringing in his, uh, specialties and people see that. Again, that just grows Marshall's reputation as a sports center and you get more and more people, which.
Right.
Puts more heads in the beds, people go out to the restaurants and go to the Hitching Post and all the other restaurants and really. Makes it the destination we want it to be, so.
Kind of a contagion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good contagion.
Right, that's great.
And there might be some things we gotta work through because he hasn't done it before and we haven't had anybody do it, so.
On that, I'd move we approve it.
I'd second that. Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just a question for Mr. Handelman or Jordan or maybe Dennis. Or maybe even Kyle, since Hitching Post has a liquor license already and if Jordan's intent is to sell. You know, three, two beer out there, will he have to apply for another liquor license? Uh, or, or maybe he's not intent to, to have. Quote unquote, three, two beers. So just a question.
Kyle, do you want to address that?
The short answer, Councilmember, is no, he would not have to apply for an additional license.
That's because of the current license that he does have.
That would be worked out in the agreement, um, that the city attorney as reviewer went, has created and. Um, but there's not a need for an additional license to be.
Okay, and Jordan, you have some comments or questions?
Just to speak on what Russ just said, it actually wouldn't be three, two beer. Um, it's strong beer because we have the ability to. Um, with our restaurant, we can cater off premise anywhere in the state of Minnesota. So the, kind of the reason that it works out. Is I didn't need to apply for any special licensures or anything like that with the state. Um, so it, it kind of just falls in, in line pretty easy with what we do already. That it wouldn't take any more work. So it would still be like, kind of this, it's same strong beer, it's just not. Um, there's no additional like licensing stuff that I would have to go do or that the city would have to do for that matter, so.
Right.
Um, just to kind of speak on that.
Your dram shop goes with you too, same, same.
Yep, so, so how it works is exactly what we're insured for in our restaurant just follows any location that we go anywhere in the state of Minnesota.
Okay, pretty good. Do you have other comments you want to make?
Yeah, there's, there's a few things that I kind of want to just throw out there. Part of the reason, just to speak on, uh, um, not kind of giving any kickback to the city on the first year. As I've talked with Preston about this, um. For the last four years or however long the facility's been there, it's always been bring your own stuff. Because the concessions, I mean, it's, sometimes they were open, sometimes they weren't open, being I've played softball two nights a week out there. It was kind of a flip of the coin if there was gonna, if it was gonna be open, if it wasn't gonna be open, and there was also no beer served out there. So this first year is kind of, uh, get people used to the fact that they should have to buy it from the concession stand. And I'm not trying to say, you know, you have to buy every single thing from the concession stand, but at least get people into the mode of. You know, shopping there as opposed to stopping somewhere else on their way out there. Um, and then just also the reason that I was kind of a proponent of the one year thing is just with how. Inactive the, um, like softball league nights are, as of right now. There's no co-rec softball being played, so there's not like a men's and women's combined league just because there's not enough interest and. You know, that has a ton of underlying factors. Um, the men's leagues are all down comparative to all the small towns around Marshall. There's more teams in smaller towns around than we currently have, so I didn't want to commit to anything kind of longer than that if it was just gonna be a. You know, something that wouldn't work out on our end. But the other reason that makes me want to do it is to keep. Tournaments like the section tournaments for high school and to get some of the, uh, like. Class E and class D softball tournaments that do happen. We, Marshall could have in theory got one last year that Mankato has now, but it, I mean, it wouldn't really have worked out with. Not really having concessions and they wouldn't have wanted to come here. Now, I think if this is something that works out, maybe it's something the s- city can try to get. More bigger tournaments to Marshall, which helps me at the restaurant because now there's people coming from out of town. Looking for a place to eat and stuff like that. So that's kind of why I was a proponent of the one, the one year and then I was talking with Preston. After this year, we could, you know, based on how it goes, easily talk about a lengthier contract and percentage to the city. Or wherever the money would want to go, so.
Very good.
Pretty much all I have on that.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the interest.
Any other, uh, questions on this or discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yep.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Mozinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda I have number twenty eight. The action would be the call for. A he- public hearing regarding the proposed property tax abatement at three oh nine Brussels Court. Questions on this?
I move that we call for a public hearing regarding proposed property tax abatement at three oh nine Brussels Court.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John, discussion? If not, uh, Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Mozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to, uh, council or commission board liaison reports from my. Uh, my commissions, the, uh, Southwest Regional Development Commission. Uh, does have their full commission and public gearing on their annual levy and that'll be this Thursday starting at three thirty. Uh, PM, so, uh, as I've reported in the past, I chair the revolving loan fund and we did receive. Uh, one point four eight million dollars, so revolving loan fund, there was terms that were available until May sixth. And as of, um, May sixth, we have loaned out in the region, um. Just shy of the one point four eight million dollars, it's actually approximately thirty three hundred dollars. Uh, short of the one point four eight million dollars. The remaining is available to, uh, uh, to relend, um. And this one point four eight million dollars, the repayment of that, uh, goes back into the revolving loan fund and stays in the revolving loan fund. So it essentially has doubled the size of the revolving loan fund that would be available in the region. Um, so that's a good thing. With that, um, Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the. Law Enforcement Center, uh, committee, building committee, the county and city met. Last week and went over some more improvements. That need to happen there. It's, it's primarily carpeting in the, uh, office areas, the share, the shared space has been, uh. Also looked at, there's a common area in the, basically where the officers work. Uh, also ceiling tile and, and, uh. Light fixtures and, and if you think back to last year, we actually carried over twenty five thousand dollars to defer to this year. Um, we should be well under that coming in, but that's work that, uh, is gonna need to be done. So, and Councilman Mozinski and I. Uh, and, uh, Administrator Hanson went and met with him along with Jim Marshall and then the representatives from the county and the sheriff's office. So. That work was done and the airport commission also met on the fifth. I was unable to attend that. We took action on those also tonight. So that's all I have.
Okay.
Steve? Nothing.
Done.
Um. The Public Housing Commission met last night. Unfortunately, I still have to work for a living, so I did miss that meeting. And then, uh, the planning commission will meet tomorrow night.
Okay, John?
Uh, EDA did have a short meeting, uh, just approving the sale of the lot that, uh, we took action on in the last meeting. Um, the DEI commission, uh, has moved their, uh, meeting times now with the whole new board and. And, uh, uh, one new co-chair, uh, it's been moved to Wednesday is the first. The first Wednesday of the, uh, the month and, uh. One of the things that, uh, action was taken is we're setting up a, uh, uh. Well, which would be a date and time for us to, uh, meet and have a session put on on microaggression. Uh, and, uh, we have a few other items coming on. There's a, uh, subcommittee that's been appointed to. Look, uh, to take on a world cafe. Discussion so we can start opening up some discussion for the public. So a couple of action items that are going on now.
Okay, thank you, John. Russ?
Adult Community Center has not met. CVB meets next week. Uh, library board met last night and I was unable to attend. And the Marshall Area Transit has not met. Thank you.
And Jim?
Um, mine have not met, so my bi-weekly update on city hall, I'm deferred to Administrator Hanson since she was through it yesterday with the staff. Tour, so she has more up to date report on it.
Okay, thank you, Jim. We'll then move to council member individual items. Uh, Jim, let's turn it your end.
Um, the only thing I have tonight is kind of on a personal note, but it's been made public now that Wayne Ivors is retiring. Uh, he's one of the two people in Marshall I think that has touched more people than anybody else. I would put Pat, uh, Mr. Ursfeld. Probably up there too, since he taught us all how to drive, but I just want to publicly tell him congratulations of thirty eight years and. All that he has done for our community and our kids here in City Marshall.
Thank you, Jim, for bringing that up. Um, Russ?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
John?
I have nothing.
Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have is just want to let everybody know that this week is. Law enforcement appreciation week and I think we're very blessed in Marshall and Lyon County with, uh, with a very thoughtful and professional, uh. Law enforcement group. And if you have a chance, try not to hug them. You can hire, you can hug firefighters, but. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hug a cop. They're, they're kind of not used to that contact, but at least thank them for their service. That's all I have. Thank you.
Steve?
On that note, um, I would like to personally thank the police department for some issues when we needed them present at the hospital. Um. I'd also like to thank Jason, uh, for some issues we had, uh, I had to report on dog waste and. On the sidewalks, um, when I'm running and, uh, it was taken care of, um, and that's it.
Okay, and done.
Um, just one thing that just came to mind here. Um, many moon ago when I was on the council, uh, I think, and, and I'm, I'm still getting my packet the hard way. Because I like to read, I like paper in my hand, but. Seems to me many years ago, we used to. Try to include or we mostly did include the minutes of our commission and board. In the packet if possible would be kind of helpful to, it seems like, um, quite a few of us miss our. Commission meetings from time to time. I know I'm not the only one. Um, but maybe that's something we could add to our packet.
Kyle will note that. Okay, I know you're, you're correct, sometimes they're not there because they're not available, but sometimes they are. So Kyle can follow up on that. Very good. Uh, from my standpoint, uh, I'll just say two quick things. One is the, um. Um, almost two weeks ago, um, Administrator Hanson and I did the, um. Uh, State of the City address and so I'd like to publicly thank Sharon for the, uh. The work that she put into that and development of the PowerPoint I, I was there, uh, but she did a lot of, uh, advance work on that, so.
Yeah, but you alleged to have done your homework.
Well, I, I, at the urging of Sharon, I did.
I want to say you did a pretty fair job.
The, uh, um, one of the things that I noted or we noted was the sales tax in. Uh, in twenty twenty as compared to twenty nineteen, the, the general use sales tax was up three point three percent. Uh, we, uh, just received today the, um, sales tax for February. That's the most recent month that has been reported. There's always a late time. Um. February, uh, sales tax, general use sales tax compared to February of twenty twenty was up. If you can correct me on this, but I believe twenty seven point three percent. So that's an indication that, you know, the. Uh, the economy, the retail activity is, uh, is becoming more and more active in the community. That's a credit to the, uh. To the business community, uh, in the community. And I think we can also see that with the, um, level of activity in the city. There seems to be a lot of construction that is going on. There's a lot of projects that are. Uh, that are, um, on the verge of starting up and there's a lot of public projects, uh, in terms of the street maintenance and overlays that. Uh, had Jason will probably report on that is already underway, so looks like it's gonna be a good year. So that's all I have. We'll, yes.
Yeah, I just, uh, you reminded me of one thing with, uh, kind of goes along with our retail. Uh, you know, the other night, uh, Shades of the Past had their, uh, roll through in Marshall. And to me, it seemed very well attended, a lot of activity downtown, a lot of people. Wandering the streets and hopefully getting into the businesses, so, uh, kind of helped out. Everybody's kind of helping out to try to get the. Business back in town and, uh, say a special thanks to Shades of the Past for doing that.
Good, thanks for bringing that up, yes. So we'll move then to staff reports, Sharon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm gonna eventually, uh. Have Kyle pull something up for me and then I'm gonna bring Preston up here too. Just a brief discussion on city hall. Um, there's always a lot of work being done on city hall and, um. we're not quite finished yet. We were supposed to get the building officially turned over to us on May third. But, uh, at that point on May third, there was quite a bit of work to be done on interior finishing. And, uh, they made good progress last week, but, uh, there's still some, some more progress to be made. We did, uh, do a final walkthrough as, uh, Councilmember Lozinski stated yesterday. And, uh, this is, uh, a walkthrough where you develop a punch list. So we had, um, Ray Hendrickson and Eli Gutman, um, inspecting, so to speak, the, the space inside and, and noting with blue tape, uh, areas of correction. And the architect was also present. And we'll, uh, do an official write-up for the City Hall Committee to eventually review. I'm not sure on the timing on that. So, you know, again, a little bit of delay on turning that building over, which makes city, city staff, um, a little, um, more cautious on when we can move in. However, we, we still think that, um, the end of May and that first week in June, we, we can be operational. That's still our, our thinking at this point. You may have noticed today that Quist Moving and Storage, who moved us out to SMSU, started moving us back. They started with cold storage and moved a lot of that cold storage into the basement. Tomorrow, they're going to start moving, uh, office furniture. So if you come to SMSU, staff is uh, dressed down a little bit, um, because we're moving things and packing it up. And, uh, so you may see more casual wear. And, um, also, uh, our offices are somewhat deconstructed at this time. Uh, we're still working through it, um, but it does make it for a little bit busier, um, time for city staff. But, um, we'll move some of that. We still, um, have new furniture on order and it's on time. It'll be delivered on May seventeenth. And the installers walked through also yesterday and, um, they got kind of a good logistical view of, of what they need to do. They will start assembling on the eighteenth. And, um, because of the, the punch list, um, painters, flooring contractors, some sheet rock touch-up, um, they'll have to work around some, some furniture and, and that's just the way it has to be. We couldn't really move the dates for the mover or the furniture installer, but otherwise it's still going, uh, I think really well. And, and it takes all of us, uh, the City Hall Committee and the staff. And, uh, it's just really good to have support from, um, from everyone on it because I know I could not do it, uh, by myself. So Kyle did pull up for your view, a conceptual sketch of the plaza. Um, two things we've had asked quite a bit by the public in the last several weeks is, um, are you going to have an open house? And, uh, what are you going to do with the plaza? So I'll talk about the plaza. Or maybe I should just mention briefly before that, because I'll pull up, um, Preston here. On the open house, um, as I mentioned earlier, Amy, uh, from Community Services is going to help. And that's a little difficult to actually set in stone because we don't know when we're going to be in. We don't want community members seeing some unfinished work in City Hall. Uh, but we don't want to get too far out, um, where it's, you know, a couple of months down the road. So we're actually thinking mid-July. Um, and it may be, our kind of initial thought is we may have a July fifteenth, which is crazy days. The benefit to that is, um, we can use all of Main Street, um, to do a ceremony to cut the ribbon. And, uh, also if City Hall has too many tourists through City Hall, we can route them to shops and other businesses, um, while we allow them to go through. I'm not sure how much interest there'll be. We want to get other groups into City Hall prior. And one group that has priority is our senior citizens who, uh, really had to take a backseat to a lot of things last year because of COVID. And our senior center was closed down a large portion of twenty twenty. So we want to bring them through first. And our Downtown Business Association as well. Those members, uh, helped us. They helped us with the wall and, uh, giving us some comments back from the, from the facade of the City Hall. So that's what we're kind of looking at for, for open house. Now, back to the sketch, um, we did have initially a prior sketch and we had the City Hall Committee, uh, give some input on this. And I don't know if Kyle, if you want to kind of move down a little bit. Um, and so, uh, we believe, and I know this, you just got this today. I just got it late, late last week. Uh, it might've been late Friday. Um, apologize for not getting it out earlier, but, uh, it's been really busy. But they did incorporate in that City Hall Committee comments. And at that time I, I said, you know, this is really, again, a community project and wanted to bring it towards the full council. And, uh, getting input was from the public is, is key and the Downtown Business Association. So we're looking at, um, this is in discussion with the architect of having a kind of a come and go open house just on the plaza design. And we're looking at doing that at the end of May. And it wouldn't be so much, do you like it or not? Um, because, uh, that really opens up the floodgates to, um, maybe a massive change to this. It's more about key features. What are some key features you like? What are some key features you do not like? We really do want to reincorporate in that hotel sign. Um, because it's really cool. It's a cool sign. And, um, how do we want to do that? And two things I'll just note, um, there's an arch, uh, in the southwest corner, and that is key because a lot of our public park communal areas have arches. And that was something that, uh, we wanted to include. And then a nod to Marshall Bridges, if, if mostly you're aware, but, um, there's a lot of pedestrian bridges over the river and, and, uh, it, it can connect you to downtown in many different ways and kind of highlighting that. And so putting a nod to the bridge connects us with all the other areas of the city and, and it could be a focal point. So I, I do want to call up Preston because he's got, um, some discussions with the VFW, I believe, who gave a donation. And then just your leadership on this because we've been entrusted him to help lead this project. So Preston, I'll step back.
Uh, thanks, Sharon. Um, yeah, just to touch base on the flagpole portion, um, if you guys remember, I think in original plans, the flagpole was built on the front sidewalk in front of, um, City Hall. Um, and we did order that actually today. Um, and I believe is the Legion that actually is going to be donating the flagpole um, along with the first flag. Um, but with everything going on, we're looking at that six to eight week range before the pole would arrive, but it will be a bronze pole um, to kind of go with the colors of City Hall. I'm going to also have some other bronze poles in the parks. Um, and then just kind of getting back to the project in general. I'd be more than, uh, willing and glad to oversee and kind of making it an attraction downtown per se, um, and not so industrial looking if it's just all concrete to kind of get a, a soft area for business people or just, uh, patrons of downtown to, uh, get away and grab a bite at lunch or get some shade or maybe sit down and need to charge your phone. Maybe there's some wifi hotspots out there, that kind of stuff, just to make it more of a, a welcoming area. Um, you know, the selfie stations are kind of big. There's some of that stuff in here, what that will all consist of. We're not exactly sure yet, but, um, I, I think it, it can be a project very similar to kind of like the Veterans Memorial where it becomes a place that people would like to go and visit and, um, it, it would make downtown even more welcoming, I think, add some color, um, stuff like that. So, um, just be glad to be a part of it. And, uh, I think a lot of the work, um, staff can do, um, and then utilizing some local contractors, um, and businesses for some of the pieces. So.
Very good. Thank you.
Input? Yeah, Preston, I just, and Sharon, I, I, I really like this idea. I know when we first talked about what's the future of the hotel and, and what does that look like? And having spent some time in New York City and one of the, I think the probably the most attractive things about New York City are their, just their little urban pop parks. And every one of them has a unique kind of personality. And I, this is, this is awesome. I know it's a, there's been a lot of thought put into this and, and that's really exciting to have that soft area and just kind of the, the, the checkout spot, the calm spot in downtown. I think that's, that's really awesome. And I'm really glad that we're looking at doing this.
Any other input? If not, Sharon, I'll turn back to you. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Preston. Uh, just want to mention one other thing on city updates. Um, we've had a couple of meetings with Avera recently. Uh, one, uh, was with the mayor talking about a past agreement regarding the sale. There's a requirement to meet on an annual basis. And it was just kind of nice to reengage on that. I wasn't here when the sale happened. Uh, neither was Debbie, the new, um, um, CEO. So, um, um, nice to bring that discussion, uh, to the forefront again. And, uh, also we did have a meeting, um, the, um, Community Services Director and I with Avera Community Partnerships. Uh, this is their foundation. This is their charitable arm of Avera. And we did talk about the Aquatic Center. And, uh, that was a really, really good discussion. And, uh, again, we brought Debbie up to speed. Luckily for Marshall and Avera, she sits on that board. So, um, it's nice to have that local connection, uh, sitting on, on that for not only Avera, but, um, locally here in Marshall. So, uh, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor. If there's any comments or question, I can certainly.
Any questions for Sharon? If not, thank you, Sharon. Jason, we'll turn to you. City Engineer, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I can just give a brief construction project update. Uh, the Merritt Pond downfall improvements project is now essentially complete and we're waiting for grass to grow. So that's, that's great. You may have seen some activity on County Road thirty-three and US fifty-nine. Uh, that was town and country excavating, doing, uh, culvert replacement under Erie Road, tying into our improvements, MNDOT's doing grading in the highway ditch and resetting that culvert. So it's good to see that work getting done right away as well. Uh, on North First Street, all the utilities are in place on Marshall Street on that project. So that's good. They are currently doing utility work on Redwood Street and D and G Excavating is doing a nice job of keeping in touch with the business community. Uh, the Mill and Overlay Project has started as well. And if you've been out in the Parkway neighborhood, you would see that there's some pedestrian ramp improvements going on and some castings being adjusted on the sanitary sewer manholes. So things are starting to pick up and we're starting to see some activity and, and that's a positive thing. That's all I've got.
And, uh, on the, um, the drainage, uh, project on leading to ditch seventy, that's underway also. You may want to comment on that?
Yes, correct. The, uh, Z seventy-eight storm structure improvements is, yes, that is, that is underway. The ones, the one going to ditch seventy and then the other structure by the MASH property that drains into the diversion channel. Yes.
Very good. Any?
A quick question for you on the intersection of Fifth Street and Lion Street. There was the Xed outer boxed out around the manhole. And then I see now it's filled back in, but the manhole is, is substantially lower than the road surface. Is that? Is that, and it looks like it was put in with, with temporary asphalt, not with hot mix. Is there, is that going to be lifted to road surface grade or is it going to stay recessed?
I'll make a note and check into that with our street department. That may have been something that they had to get into, um, before the plant opened up. So I, I'll check with them about that.
I suspect that that's the same because I know that the, that the cutout on Main Street East is also still there, you know, the, the chicane on Main Street. So, thank you.
Hey, any other questions for Jason? If not, uh, City Attorney, Dennis Simpson?
I think we've asked it, acted on everything tonight that I wanted to discuss.
The remaining, uh, agenda items include the administrative brief for your council's review, as well as the information items, including the building permits and the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there any other item to come forward this evening? If not, motion by Craig, seconded by Steve to adjourn discussion. If not by voice vote, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
The vote, the motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.